All right. You want to get started? Welcome and good evening, everyone. My name is Michael Logan. I'm with Compliance Sludge Services. And we are the environmental consultants for Gator Recycling Company. This is a public hearing on the environmental justice impact statement for EJIS for the Gator Recycling Solid Waste Transfer Station Material Recovery Facility located at 278 West Railway Avenue, Patterson, Passaic County, New Jersey. This public meeting is being held both in person as well as presented virtually online to ensure the access to the community. The website location that's provided. Try to include slide. Next slide. We will have a live, time-related translation of the hearing that's being presented in Spanish to both persons attending as well as those participating virtually. For the instructions, to enable the translation online, you would click the show captions button. The captions will appear above the control toolbar. Next, you select your speaking language and the language that you'd like to have the captions to be translated to. To facilitate the meeting, we also have a translator here that's available to assist with any specific needs during the hearing. Just for the meeting details, again, more of a housekeeping issue. The preparation and development of the EJIS and the need for this public hearing is necessary based on Gator's facility intent to increase their daily throughput capacity of solid waste at its facility. The public hearing will serve, also serve as a final hearing of a Passaic County Solid Waste Management Plan Amendment that incorporates Gator's proposed increase in its daily solid waste throughput capacity. The documents presented at this meeting hearing will be available electronically both in English and Spanish at the following website locations indicated on the slides. This hearing will be recorded, and a copy of the video recording as well as a translation of the hearing in both English and Spanish will also be available on the website locations indicated above. Just for meeting ground rules, we ask that everyone be respectful during the presentation as well as during the public comment session that's going to follow. Please silence your cell phones vertical. The meeting is anticipated to last up to two hours or until the conclusion of our public comments. We ask that you please save your questions until the presentation concludes as we're trying to have all the information presented verbally for the record. At the end of the presentation, attendees in both in-person as well as online may verbally comment on the application for the record. It says, for onsite attendees, we ask that you please sign in on the public comment sign-in sheet provided at the front. For those online, please raise your hands when the chat, we use a chat function. For those calling in by phone only, please press star nine to activate the raise your hand feature to indicate your request to comment. We will document any comments received during the hearing and respond to all comments received which will be forwarded to the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection with its department, the New Jersey DEP, for their consideration on the proposed expansion project. Please note that comments may also be submitted in writing up until July 12, 2024. The written comments should be addressed to Gator Recycling Company, Gator Compliance Sludge Services, at 240 Gibraltar Road, Suite 100, Corsham, Pennsylvania, 1900, 19044. The address is indicated on the slideshow in case it's not translating through properly. Written comments may also be forwarded electronically to the email address indicated on the slides. Responses to written comments will be prepared at the end of the public comment period and submitted to the New Jersey DEP for consideration. Electronic copy of the EJIS has also been made available at the website locations indicated on the slide. A physical copy of the EJIS has been made available for review at the municipal clerk's office of the city of Patterson located at 155 Market Street, Patterson, New Jersey, 07505. Our agenda for tonight's meeting is we will first talk about the environmental justice overview and will overview of the current facility operations. We'll discuss the project overview and speak about an assessment of the public project impacts on environmental and public health stressors. We'll conclude the meeting after the presentation and then open it up for public comments. So, New Jersey's environmental justice law requires the NJDEP to evaluate the potential environmental and public health impacts of certain facilities in overburdened communities. This review process is required for select environmental permit applications that could result in new impacts to the overburdened community. The environmental justice rules are provided under the New Jersey Administrative Code and establish the specific impact assessment requirements and enhance public outreach procedures that advocates must follow when seeking to prevent new facilities or to expand existing facilities located or proposed to be located in an overburdened community. As required in the new environmental justice rules, applicants seeking these permits in overburdened communities must prepare an environmental justice impact statement consistent with the requirements specified under the New Jersey Administrative Code. As discussed above, the Gator facility is seeking to increase its current daily solid waste throughput capacity at its existing facility. The proposed increase is considered an expansion of a facility covered under the department's new environmental justice rules that has the potential to affect environmental and public health stressors. Accordingly, to implement this expanded activity, the Gator facility is required to modify its solid waste facility permit as well as its current air pollution control permits for the existing operation. Both permits are specifically identified in the environmental justice rules. Based on the above, and each EJIS has been prepared by Compliance Sludge Services that evaluates and assesses potential environmental and public health stressor impacts that may be associated with Gator's facility and the proposed increase in daily throughput capacity. The EJIS includes detailed environmental assessment information related to the current facility and proposed operations to satisfy requirements specified by the department under the New Jersey Administrative Code specified on this screen. Under the environmental justice rules and consistent with the definitions provided in the New Jersey Administrative Code, the EJIS prepared for Gator's transfer station proposed daily capacity increase is required to provide a systematic interdisciplinary and integrated assessment of environmental and public health conditions in the overburdened community to identify and analyze ones existing environmental and public health stressors, any adverse environmental health stressors, the presence or absence of environmental adverse cumulative stressors, potential environmental and public health stressors associated with the Gator facility, whether the facility can avoid causing a disproportionate impact, and the measures the facility has proposed to implement to avoid or address disproportionate impacts. Gator is a family-owned company that has been in continuous operation since 1935. Gator currently operates a permitted solid waste transfer station and material recovery facility as well as a Class A recycling center in Patterson, New Jersey that is authorized by the department under its solid waste facility permit number TRP 230001. The transfer station and material recovery facility is located at 278 West Railway Avenue, Patterson, New Jersey, Passaic County as depicted above. Gator's Class A recycling center facility is located across the street from the transfer station material recovery facility at 189 to 195 Genesee Avenue. The Gator's transfer station material recovery facility is located in a mixed-use area of the city of Patterson. To the east are residential properties, I'm sorry, to the east are the Norfolk Southern rail tracks located on here. To the north are industrial uses. To the west are residential properties and a local Islamic mosque. To the south are mixed residential and commercial properties. Gator's transfer station and material recovery facility has been in continuous operation this location since 1990. The facility has been expanded in volume and physical size several times since the beginning of operations. The existing facility is currently permitted to accept 720 tons per day, TPD, of solid waste, which may include up to 300 tons per day of Class A recyclables, which are typically transferred to and managed at Gator's Class 15 recycling center located just across from the transfer station material recovery facility. The solid waste materials that are accepted include type 10 or municipal waste, type 13 or bulky waste, type 13C or construction and demolition waste, type 23 or vegetative waste, type 27 or dry industrial waste. In addition to the Class A recycled materials such as glass, cardboard, metal, some plastic, the facility may also accept and segregate for recovery Class B-type recycled materials including concrete, aggregates, brick, block, wood, et cetera. No liquid waste, hazardous waste, regulated negative waste, or other waste solid waste materials other than those indicated above are accepted at the transfer station material recovery facility. The facility is permitted to accept waste from 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and from 6:00 AM to 5:00 PM on Saturday. Waste processing may occur from 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and from 6:00 AM to 5:00 PM on Saturdays. Collection vehicles access the site via West Railway Avenue. Vehicles are directed to one of the two scales by yard staff. After vehicles are weighed and origin and disposal form required by the state are submitted and reviewed, trucks are directed to the appropriate tipping area based on the nature of the incoming materials and available force rates as monitored by the yard staff. Incoming waste is inspected for the presence of the unauthorized waste materials indicated on the previous slides. We have a depiction of the facility from several elevation views. Well, the next slide shows the interior of the actual facility, transfer station, material recovery facility itself. In the transfer station, the material recovery facility, there are primarily tipping areas indicated In the transfer station material recovery facility, there are primarily tipping areas indicated in the far portion of the building here. The waste may also be tipped in several other locations inside the building. Primarily wastes are processed through balers located inside the building. Which are used to enclose and case solid wastes for transport and handling for shipment outbound. Always perceived that GATA's transfer station material recovery facility is placed within the facility's enclosed process building that operates under negative air pressure. Ensuring all emissions in the building are being drawn to one of four air pollution control systems. Collection units to address potential odors or potential emissions of dust via the filters that remove particulates that are ventilated from the air being emitted through the air conceived exhaust system. Combine the APC system ventilation collects and filters one-thousand, one-hundred thousand after a cubic feet per minute of the building's air. Which exceeds the New Jersey DEP's minimum design requirements for solid waste transfer stations. Incoming solid waste and recycled materials are received at the transfer station material recovery facility. And unloaded into one of designated tipping floor process areas where the waste is manually sorted using loaders and similar equipment. Outbound materials are then typically baled as needed prior to shipment offsite. Recycled class A recovered class A recycled materials are typically reloaded for delivery to GATA's class A recycling center for further sorting and transfers to authorized recycling markets. Solid waste is routinely reloaded into solid waste transfer vehicles for delivery outbound to approved solid waste disposal facilities. GATA regularly bails solid waste into department authorized polypropylene woven fabric rail bags for transport via transfer trailers to GATA's rail intermodal container facility. For final shipment outbound. GATA also utilizes intermodal containers to transport to other non-GATA intermodal container facility locations for transport by rail to approved disposal facilities or landfills. GATA has recently added the ability to bail waste into environmental rail bags, environmental bailed rail bags. Which are specially designed high tensile strength sealed woven polypropylene bags. That are loaded directly into transfer trailers at the transfer station material recovery facility. These specifically engineered rail bags are designed to provide environmentally secure transportation and handling of waste shipments. Rail bags are loaded into transfer vehicles and shipped to GATA's new rail ICF location. On Getty Avenue and is located near the entrance of Route I eighty or Interstate eighty. The rail bags are then live loaded into rail cars for shipment to final disposal destinations. GATA invested in this new technology and infrastructure to support its transfer station material recovery facility operations. And to achieve the following goals. First is the availability of affordable waste disposal is getting further away from this area. And out of the state of New Jersey. Resulting in more time costs and potential environmental impacts related to shipping waste via highway. Due to the short trip to the rail intermodal container facility, GATA can utilize less vehicles. And uses less time to transport waste from the transfer station material recovery facility. As opposed to traveling to distant landfill locations such as those in southeastern Pennsylvania. With the savings of times and vehicles, GATA can stagger its outbound shipping onto non or off-peak hours and further reduce local traffic impacts. GATA is committed to long-term utilization of rail as an option for shipping of solid waste to offsite disposal facilities and landfills to ensure further disposal, future disposal capacity. Rail also provides a fuel efficient means of transportation. Saving fossil fuels and reducing greenhouse gases emissions, particularly those as disposal options become more remote. GATA is currently preparing an application for submission to the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. Bureau of Solid Waste permitting to modify its solid waste facility permit. For approval of a proposed increase in its current daily throughput capacity from seven-hundred-and-twenty tons per day to twelve-hundred tons per day. At the transfer station. Additionally, GATA is applying to the Bureau of Air Quality to revise its current air pollution control pre-construction permits. For its facility to incorporate the increase in daily solid waste throughput capacity. Important to note that there are no physical construction or proposed changes needed to process at, to the process building or existing equipment to add the increased waste handling at the transfer station material recovery facility. The expanded daily capacity does not require any change to GATA's transfer station material recovery facility operating hours. And there are no changes proposed to the class A recycling center tonnage located at the one-eighty-nine to one-ninety-five Genesee Avenue location. This will remain at three-hundred tons per day. The current New Jersey DEP approval. And interior emissions capture system and air pollution control systems are in place and designed to adequately handle the anticipated increase in emissions associated with the increased capacity of twelve-hundred tons per day. The system manages to control all air formed particulates and odors generated from the interior receipt tipping, processing, and transfer operations that are conducted at the building. There are also no proposed changes in the current approved traffic routes used to access the facility. Traffic studies and assessments completed in two thousand fifteen, two thousand twenty-two, and most recently in two thousand twenty-four. Have demonstrated that the additional truck traffic associated with the proposed increase to twelve-hundred tons per day will not have any adverse impacts on the surrounding local roadways. To prepare the environmental justice impact statement for the proposed facility expansion project. An overburdened community stressor summary report was run using the New Jersey environmental justice mapping assessment and protection system which is available by the department. The overburdened community stressor summary provides the department assessment of the individual existing environmental and public health stressors that are in the overburdened community. Which are characterized as adverse if they're above or higher than the geographic point of comparison that's set by the department. For this overburdened communities. There are actually twenty-one adverse environmental public health stressors that were identified. That exceeded the aesthetic point of comparison. Of these five of the adverse stressors could be perpetually impacted by GATA's proposed increase in daily capacity based on the assessment completed for the environmental justice impact statement. So to, we're going to look at the assessment of the project impacts on environmental public health stresses. First impact is traffic, heavy-duty vehicles or trucks. The potential impact of new and increases in the number of heavy-duty trucks associated with the project. Is a principal concern that needs to be addressed early in the project planning process. Based on the proposed increase in daily throughput capacity and solid waste at the transfer station material recovery facility. Potential traffic impacts were reviewed and assessed on several occasions. Both before the environmental justice impact statement was developed and after. An initial traffic study was conducted at the transfer station material recovery facility in two thousand fifteen. Another impact traffic assessment was conducted in two thousand twenty-two. And the two thousand twenty-two traffic assessment was recently updated in February of two thousand twenty-four as part of the environmental adjustment impact statement to include an evaluation of the use. Of GATA's new rail intermodal container facility on traffic conditions. Additionally, updated assessment addresses new developments that were underway and recently completed in the city of Patterson as well as conducting traffic counts at several additional intersections along the current approved truck access route to the facility. All three completed traffic assessment reports concluded that the proposed increase in trucks both delivering waste to the facility and shipping waste from the facility would not result in any adverse traffic impacts to surrounding roadways. Additionally, there were no significant change in traffic delays. Nor was there a change in the level of service on the current roadways utilized or vehicle accessing the GATA transfer station material recovery facility. Moreover, in the two thousand twenty-four report, there's an indication that the use of the new intermodal container facility created efficiencies in truck management at the facility as anticipated. Based on the most recent traffic assessment report. The increase in trucks delivering waste to the facility was expected to result in an average of five to seven extra vehicles per hour. Over the transfer station material recovery facility's thirteen-hour operating day permanent receiving times. During weekdays for a total of fifty-three to eighty trucks per day depending on the size and the weight of the vehicles. Additionally, outbound trucks shipping waste offsite including to GATA's intermodal container facility will increase by approximately one to two trucks per hour for a total of one trucks per day. The current approved truck routes designated for inbound and outbound waste vehicles accessing the facility were designated to avoid having additional truck traffic in residential areas. To ensure safety and minimize potential new nuisances. GATA has also previously operated at eleven-hundred tons per day for several months during Hurricane Ida. Without incident or neighbor complaints. Based on this information, the proposed increase in the daily capacity is not expected to significantly impact this structure. Additional adverse, inspector, additional adverse stressor evaluated included ground level ozone. Ground level ozone forms when volatile organic compounds, VOCs, interact with nitrous oxides, NOx. In the presence of sunlight. There are no NOx or volatile organic compounds emitted associated with the actual waste management at the transfer station facility that would contribute to ground level ozone. Consequently, the increase in amount of waste being handled each day will not affect ground level ozone. The facility does operate mobile loaders and excavator equipment that produce both NOx and VOCs. For volatile organic compounds which can contribute to ground level ozone. However, GATA is not adding or required to increase or install new mobile equipment as part of the capacity increase. Accordingly, there are no new impacts in ground level ozone for this the use of the onsite mobile equipment with this proposed project expansion. However, as described in the EJIS, new ground level ozone impacts are solely related to the added trucks that will be accessing the transfer station material recovery facility. Just noted that vehicles accessing the GATA facility are already utilizing local roadways. Where the solid waste generated will still have to be transported to a local transfer station or other processing or disposals. However, based on the assumed diesel fuel emissions from the added traffic. As outlined in the environmental justice impact statement. The proposed increase in nitrous oxide. Emissions from the increase in inbound and outbound vehicles are expected to be increased by up to point zero-point-eight-six tons per year. Similarly, volatile organic compound emissions from new inbound and outbound vehicles are expected to increase by up to zero-point-six-zero tons per year. This level of emissions would be considered small or a small minor source of emissions under the department's air quality regulations for stationary sources. Additionally, in each case, the emissions are substantially below the five pound, I'm sorry, five tons per year level that will require assessment for added controls. Lastly, the environmental justice impact statement does note that GATA's use of its new intermodal container facility to transport outbound waste via rail takes up to thirty-five tractor trailers previously traveling as much as one hundred and sixty miles round trip Pennsylvania landfills off of. Pennsylvania landfills off of the New Jersey roadways. Transport via rail is up to four times more fuel efficient than highway transportation, resulting in seventy-five percent less emissions. Based on this information, Gata's proposed expansion project is not expected to have a significant impact on this stressor. Fine dust and particulates were an adverse stressor identified in this overburdened community. Fine dust and particulates that are less than two point five microns or one millionth of a meter or less, including diesel particulate matter emissions, are expected to potentially be generated from Gata's onsite waste handling activities, the use of the onsite mobile equipment, such as loaders and excavators, as well as offsite emissions related to vehicles that access the facility for solid waste deliveries and outbound shipments of processed materials. Each were assessed. For waste handling activities, the waste handling emissions associated with the proposed increase in the daily waste throughput capacity will have a resulting increase in these PF two-point-five, the small fine particulates emissions, that is directly proportional to the quantity of waste that would be managed at the site. As previously discussed, all waste handling is conducted within the transfer station material recovery facility's processing building, which is maintained under negative pressure during waste operations. As designed, the robust draft from the building's ventilation system captures any emissions generated in the building in direction one of Gata's four air pollution control collection units. These units are equipped with multi-stage dust collection filter systems that remove particulates and dust, including these fine dusts, which are considered PF two-point-five, that may be in the exhaust air. Based on the current emissions calculations prepared and included in Gata's pre-construction air permit application currently submitted to the department for review, PCP number two-four-zero-zero-two, the net increase in PF two-point-five emissions from the air pollution control system exhaust at the facility are expected to be zero point zero-zero-nine-one tons per year. In addition to the building's APC controls, as discussed above, Gata is currently using polypropylene fabric bags to containerize most of the waste processed through the transfer station material recovery facility. These are added controls beyond their permit requirements and have been recently employed and will help reduce emissions. It's not included in the number we presented above. The mobile equipment emissions, Gata does use diesel-powered mobile handling equipment that has diesel particulate matter emissions. However, the proposed increase in the daily throughput capacity, which does not change the hours of operation and does not require addition of new equipment, so therefore, there will be no new emissions of PF two-point-five associated with the mobile equipment as part of this proposed expansion project. Truck traffic-related offsite emissions from these PF two-point-five materials were also assessed. And based on the proposed increase in daily throughput capacity, there is a projected increase in the number of vehicles, which we just discussed, that deliver solid waste to the Gata's existing transfer station material recovery facility, as well as an increase in the number of vehicles used to ship waste offsite from the facility for outbound locations. The use of diesel-fuel-powered vehicles will result in additional PF two-point-five emissions. As outlined in the EJIS, diesel-powered vehicles emit diesel particulates in those exhausts that contribute to PF two-point-five. However, the use of these heavy-duty trucks also produces PF two-point-five emissions from truck tire wear and brake wear based on each mile travel. Based on the projected increase in vehicle associated with the proposed throughput capacity, combining these additional PF two-point-five emission sources from engine exhaust, tire wear, and brakes is expected to result in an addition of zero point zero-zero-seven tons per year of PF two-point-five emissions. The total projected impacts then from the PF two-point-five emissions are summarized below. Resulting in aggregate in PF two-point-five emissions will result in zero point zero-zero-one-zero tons per year of new emissions, PF two-point-five emissions. These emission levels are de minimis, very small, and result in about two pounds per year in aggregate and actually fall below the department's reporting threshold limits for air emissions. Accordingly, the additional emissions associated with the proposed daily capacity increase is expected to have negligible effect on air quality in the overburdened community and is not expected to significantly impact this stressor. Another adverse stressor is the cancer risk potentially associated with diesel particulate matter. So diesel particulate matter are the small particles, as we just discussed, partially combusted organic compounds and other materials that are primarily derived from large engine exhausts, such as from diesel-fueled trucks. As noted for the PF two-point-five, the proposed increase in daily throughput capacity is projected to increase the number of trucks that both deliver solid waste to ship waste from the transfer station material recovery facility. Although onsite diesel-powered mobile equipment does produce diesel particulate matter emissions, the proposed increase in daily capacity does not require the addition of new mobile equipment. Consequently, there are no new expected emissions or impacts from diesel particulate matters from mobiles. Accordingly, based on these conditions, diesel particulate matter emissions associated with the proposed increase in daily capacity at Gata's transfer station material recovery facility is based on the increase in trucks that will be accessing the site. This is calculated in the environmental justice impact statement, which is limited to just the exhaust from the engines and will result in zero point zero-zero-six-zero tons per year of new diesel particulate emissions. These emission levels are small and actually fall below the department's reporting threshold limits. Accordingly, the additional emissions associated with the proposed daily capacity increase is not expected to significantly impact this stressor. The additional adverse stressor that was reviewed is the non-cancer risk from potential air toxins. Solid waste received from industrial, commercial, and residential sources had the potential to contain certain de minimis amounts of potential air toxin compounds that could be admitted during process. Gata utilizes several administrative and operational controls, as well as specific engineering measures to reduce or eliminate the potential for possible air toxins from these impacting the community. These administrative and operational controls are intended to prevent receipt of unauthorized waste, such as hazardous waste, drums, liquids, PCBs, asbestos, at the transfer station material recovery facility. These measures include the use of customer contracts that specify and communicate restrictions, ensuring incoming wastes have the required New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection origin and disposal forms that identify the waste sources, and implementing onsite inspection to screen solid waste received to remove or reject unauthorized materials. Again, as indicated, Gata manages all waste inside of its processing building, which is operated under negative pressure and provides one hundred percent capture of the emissions generated during waste handling to the building's air pollution control system. Gata's high-efficiency particulate filter provides greater than ninety-nine percent control, and the activated carbon filtration units on the air pollution control system provides ninety-five percent control that are part of the building's air pollution control system and have a broad-based technology that is capable of addressing potential air toxin contaminants if they are present in building emissions. Although the increase throughout throughput in the solid waste has potential to produce insignificant quantities of air toxins, the controls employed at the site make this potential impact negligible. And it's not, this proposed project is not expected to impact this stressor. So in conclusion, there's no significant adverse impacts expected from the operations of the proposed increased daily activities. Gata is not expected to result in significant adverse impacts to local traffic in the area of the facility and does not require any new changes to the existing building or facility operations. In addition, the new daily waste volume will only result in small or de minimis increases in overall related potential air emissions that do not present a, that present only a small or insignificant impact to offsite residents in the overburdened community. Demonstrated successful operation, again, the facility has operated during Hurricane Ida where Gata received authorized emergency approval to operate at a capacity of up to eleven hundred tons per day. The facility operated at this increased capacity for several months without any issues or incidents, and no community complaints were raised with the Department of Environmental Protection or the county during this time. Gata has also held both an environmental justice public information session previously on the proposed expanded project as part of its plan amendment application with Passaic County, along with two additional public meetings that were held as part of the county's review process. Gata's plan amendment request was also open for a sixty-day comment period at that time where the local community had the opportunity to comment or oppose the application. And no adverse comments were received by Gata or Passaic County on the plan amendment request. The City of Patterson has also issued to Gata a letter of support for the proposed increase in daily throughput capacity at the facility issued by the mayor. This concludes the presentation portion of this public hearing. The opening goes up for public comments, which for anyone that's going to be commenting, we ask that you use the mic stand that's provided in the center of the room for anyone that's currently at the location. We've asked people to start finding to their assignment sheet and we'll be going through that. In addition, we'll take the online comments that may be provided through my lovely assistant over here, John. Please note that the comments may also be submitted in writing, as we indicated before. We're up to thirty days after this meeting, which is July twelfth, two thousand twenty-four, and we've provided the written comments, the address in the presentation. The comments may also be forwarded electronically to the public hearing at complianceplusservices.com. And again, responses to the comment will be at the end of the public comment period. And electronic comments, the copies of the EJIS has been made available at the DEP's website, as well as we have an additional website that is set up through ours, which we both brought in on the through the meeting application. We'll address any questions and/or comments. If you just want to make a comment, you can just comment or forward.
Thank you.
This meeting is being recorded, so it is going to go in as part of the public record. It's a public hearing. And it will be submitted to the Department of Environmental Protection as part of the application review. It goes through the environmental justice impact statement review first before the applications are accepted for actual review by the department.
Oh, thank you. My name is Spots Mygannas. I live off the block. I've been living here for over one year. And I recently came across the original permit for Gata. And in section two, one E, it states, "The operation of the facility shall not result in odors associated with solid waste being detected offsite to any area of human occupancy." This is our main concern. We smell garbage inside our house with the windows closed multiple days, some days maybe not, but multiple days, especially in the summer. And I'm sorry, this is, you know, we can't enjoy our own property. And honestly, we have complained about it. We've called Gata many times. We've called Passaic. We've called his associate, I forgot his name right now, Bob here. We've talked to Brother Rade, and there's just been no difference whatsoever. And honestly, we're at the point now that maybe we're going to have to do a class action lawsuit, get a lawyer, and, you know, you have to follow the permit that you got. No odor.
Absolutely. Any questions to that, or is it, we agree that is in the permit, that is the condition of the permit. We will adhere to putting that comment directly into the record, so it means it's department as part of the processing of this hearing.
Any agents that are interested in joining me who could find the, if your name is...
I will say that if anybody just want to make comments, just try to stay close to the mic, because otherwise I'm not going to get the recording properly. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
I don't think, is the mic on?
It's yeah, not loud. You have to be really close to it. Sorry.
Okay. Good evening. My name is X and I'm the environmental justice organizer.
Good evening. My name is X and I'm the environmental justice organizer of Greenwater Action. I have several concerns on behalf of Patterson as an overburdened community. The EJ law requires you to have this hearing means not one more drop of pollution. So when I hear you say that you're going to increase the PMS five, which can get into your bloodstream, your lungs, when I hear you say that you will increase traffic, which is associated with heart attacks, especially in elderly people. And when I'd say, uh, when I hear you say that you're going to increase the risk of cancer from diesel, when in this area, it's already 183 people per million and the state average is only 82 per million. So we're saying, or on behalf of the Patterson community, I also have some friends here that join us from the Patterson Alliance as well. I want to oppose this expansion. The only instance of success that you showed was in 2021 where Hurricane Ida, you know, allowed y'all to process 1100 tons per day. But you guys had at least two violations for co-mingling recyclables and garbage in 2021 and improperly keeping up with your vehicles. Another, I have a whole, a whole laundry list of problems. But another thing is in general, you guys have 20 violations and a lot of them include already exceeding the emissions or the amount of waste that you guys process and at the same time leaking and spilling on streets, right? I canvassed the area yesterday at every door that we fly, at every single door that I went to across the street and within the one block of city. You guys are in the one mile radius of about 21 schools and hospitals. And on behalf of the community, I would just like to oppose it. Do you have any rebuttal before I keep going?
I'm just going to put one thing in here that we do have a limited time. So I'm just going to tell everybody gets an opportunity to voice their opinion. Cause I know they, they have extended opinions and I know that there was a letter that was already submitted with written preliminary related comments from the Delaware Greenwood Action Group that we just, we're going to try to hold the comments to about five minutes per person. Okay. So we can get as efficient number of people in through.
I think I said the bulk of what I needed to say on that. For more details, feel free to, um, reach out to me after the meeting. But the last thing I will say is I'm also problematizing the way that this meeting is structured. One, the people in this area, it's called Little Palestine, right? They mostly speak Arabic, Turkish or Russian, and the only public notice was submitted in Spanish. And I see you have Spanish on the screen, but a lot of these people just don't speak English or Spanish. Another thing is this facility isn't conducive of a public hearing for community members. There are flies coming in and out of here. It's really loud outside and it's just not a welcoming environment for community members. So I'm also requesting that you do another hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is John Leonti, uh, over in Waldwood, New Jersey. And I utilize the Gator transfer station every day. I'm here every day. Uh, my company's trucks come in and out of here every day. And we're very grateful for facilities like this one. And I wanted to comment and say that Gator Recycling operates one of the cleanest and most efficient facilities in the state of New Jersey. And if you do not believe that, I invite you to go to any other transfer station in New Jersey and you will see the odors and the smells and how horrible it is. And Gator Recycling's facility here is one of the absolute cleanest I've been to. I've been to them all and they're disgusting. And they have maggots and they have rats and they have seagulls all over the place. And the stench is absolutely horrible and it is nothing like that here. I'm here every day. I'm here and how it is.
I believe it's my turn to talk. Excuse me. We asked, we asked everybody at least the, you know, at least the, uh, cops and if everybody has some time. We're allowing everybody to speak. It's going to be at their time. So I'm going to hold everybody to five minutes initially here. John is my timekeeper. So everybody has an opinion and that's it. Thank you.
Gator Recycling operates one of the cleanest facilities in the state of New Jersey. Their employees, their employees are some of the most helpful and knowledgeable people at any transfer station I've been to. I've been to them all. In addition, they, they ship their trash out by rail now. They used to, they used to send it out by trucks, hundreds of trucks each week out to Pennsylvania that they've taken off the road and they send down the street to their rail facility, which is extremely, extremely, um, efficient. I'm sorry. None of these other places in the state of New Jersey run an as efficient operation as they do here. There are some that are pretty good, but here they're very good. They're excellent here. And in my opinion, they're one of the best.
Oh, thank you.
Anyways, thank you for, uh, for letting me share my experience here and, um, thank you again.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, my name is Mark. I'm a community activist on teaching environmental justice to you, Patterson. So talk about pollution, air quality pollution. You are going to create more trucks. Has the air quality been tested at the traffic stops, when those, the traffic is backed up on Getty Avenue? Now you did the survey about traffic flow, right? Did you take into account that the longest building that's going to house, I don't even know how many people, that's coming soon. So was that accounted for when you did the survey about traffic? And there's another part of Brooks Avenue. There's a lot of traffic that flows to this area and where regular residents from, from Madison Avenue to Crooks, it's impossible sometimes to get through. We got schools, plenty of schools. You know, if you have the housing that's going to open up, we're talking about how many apartments, that's going to create car traffic, bus traffic, more school buses and senior movements of housing, you know, on traffic. So that has to be taken into consideration. You did a survey in February. That building's not open yet and there is Crooks Avenue.
And I have to say the mic is not working. Like I can't focus the truck.
I need, if you can, please set, get them closer to the mic and then help them out.
Hey, I'm Sandy Boss. I am a resident of Patterson and I'm an environmental scientist. I worked at Patterson for several years.
Can you move closer into the mic?
I was the environmental commissioner for Patterson until I retired from that position two years ago. We're in a position now, look out across the street, how many units of housing are there? Where's that garbage going to go? Totala has over 500 units going up currently being built now. The judge came down said they can't pawn off their low income housing. They must build it. Does anybody remember Little Sisters of the Poor? That's being knocked down for low income housing. Where's all this garbage going? Look in Little Falls, they already built over 3,000 units of housing. Where's the garbage going to go? The state county has three transfer stations. That's it. Nothing else. Now say a truck comes down from Fort Wayne, Totala, Little Falls. So then, and this is, I'm sorry, I reached my limit. I can't take any more garbage. You think they're going back to Totala and say, here's your garbage, can't take it. They're going around a corner and they're dumping. And I've seen it many years. A lot of the odors all go away. Look at all the dumping. That's where a lot of the issue is coming. It's increasing the rats. We need to stop all this illegal dumping. If they could take more here, that would help eliminate all this dumping. We want cameras around. We want to catch them. One of my cameras caught a guy dumping in the Passaic River. I brought him into the office. He said, oh, no, not me. I was ready. I had it on screen, the video of him dumping. Oh yeah, that's my truck. My, my friend borrowed the truck and that he went to Florida, might commit suicide. I don't care. Your truck, you're responsible. But we need to do more of that. That we get Gator to increase what they could take in, eliminate a lot of the people dumping and they can't bring it anywhere. Bergen County's not going to take it. They won't take it. It's a lot. Tell them it comes Patterson. Water, again, they have garbage.
Come see the lakes?
Come see the lakes, Passaic County. But this is the problem. Let's take more garbage in here, eliminate some of the dumping. And we have to do something. Get some more sprinklers, some, some systems in there to create odor. Right now, it's not increased trucks. They're eliminating a lot of the trucks by going by train. We've had trains in Patterson for years. It's about time to start utilizing them instead of the truck. A lot of them are put on train and look at the process. They're completely encapsulated. So it has no odors when it goes on and it doesn't spill. We got increased that, more training to get it to stop these trucks. There's a lot more we could do, but we have to increase how much we could take and get off the street and try to get together to stop a lot of the dumping. I speak a lot at all different communities. I spoke last month at the Quality Life meeting for the sixth ward. People are tired of the dumping. So let's get some of them off the street and get to it the way it's supposed to be processed properly. Let's get more cameras. Let's get things done. Michael helped the city of Passaic. There is dumping in this big parking lot. How many tons of garbage did you move there? 150 tons. Just dumped. Of course, they're not going to go dump legally. So this is what we do. Get some of them where they could take some process legally and get more cameras around and let's stop all over this area. We have a lot of dumping and our garbage is going to increase with all this new building. I think I'm the only one whose garbage hasn't increased. Did my son move down? No more garbage. But everybody, it's, it's building up. We have to get rid of it. And we have to expect that it's coming down the pipe. There's going to be a lot more. How many units dropped the street now? 181 units. How much garbage are they going to take?
A thousand people over to that. So, so if the traffic is in us, it's the community and the building.
And I know the community tried to party to limit and reduce that amount, but they lost. Cause there's not enough people that are willing to open their mouth. And that's where you have to band together, stop all these actions. We want to stop it and bring it down where it's manageable. Thank you.
Thank you. This will indicate that the traffic study since there was a question did include a look at and incorporate the projected traffic potential from the new residential area. Go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mark. I'm the general manager on the restaurant on Brooks Avenue. Um, I have like a few concerns that I have some questions as well that I wanted to ask. I'm not sure if you guys, um, provide, um, questions on the spot or that's something you can give back to me.
So when, when this whole facility...
Okay. So when this facility was about what year you said? 1990. How many trucks back then was operating? Don't recall roughly? 160 tons per day. No, no, no. I'm asking how many trucks? Yeah. And how many trucks do you guys have now? 100. And we live and we, um, like consume business in the area as a, I would say like an Arabic community here. I'm not going to be specific, but Middle Eastern. And most of us come from, uh, African world countries that are not developed. But we know one thing which is like very obvious to anyone, which is you don't process garbage where people live, eat, pray and have their normal life activities. So usually dump those are way in faraway areas, not in between resident areas. There's an, an increase of rats in the areas in numbers that are not seen before. We've noticed like them running in the streets, flies everywhere. And if you drive here by midnight, when everything calms down, the smell is unbearable. And, and your nicely done proposal like PDL file you guys did right now. So you're, guys are estimating almost like a 90% increase on processing, uh, waste, correct? No, no. It was like 700 and 20. 720 tons per day now. 1.2. And they're going to 1200, which will be 480 more tons, approximately 46%. Okay. So and, and with those numbers, like let's say you guys like increasing about 40%. But your whole proposal says that the smell is not going to be affected, the traffic is not going to be affected, the hours of operation is not going to be affected, the emissions are not going to be affected. Simple math. If a restaurant sells 10 orders and then I want to sell like 16 orders, they need to add one more person in, in charge to do those orders. They're going to have more customers coming in to serve. That means there's increasing traffic, increasing emissions, uh, increase in labor and hours and, and smell. So more problems, more hours of operation. I mean, the street over here, it, you can't even drive with a car. Like I've seen so many people that up their tires here. You guys don't even maintain a street that you guys operate in. And the city is not doing anything about it for how many years? So many years. We've been in here for like 10, 15 years. That street is horrible. Everybody want to take that shortcut, but then the car gets really messed up. You guys don't even take care of the block that you guys are already currently operating in. So how you guys expect us to really trust you by like taking care of like the whole neighborhood around you? So it seems like you're just over like money game, not even putting like the people that live around, the people that commerce around into your equation. So, and also like what town, like how many facilities of this in New Jersey that we have? Do you guys have like an idea about how many facilities? So Passaic has three?
Passaic County has three. There's a number, you know, stopping out about 100 in the, in the state of New Jersey, I believe. But I haven't looked at the exact number.
Do we process garbage here from outside of Passaic County?
It's an open county so that they can take in materials outside of Passaic.
Do we send any of Passaic County garbage to be treated somewhere else?
Passaic County, I, I don't know of all the Passaic County garbage. And Passaic County is not a flow control county, so it can be taken anywhere.
Okay. So the question is like, why do we have to process others' garbage and like, and since we have that facility, it should be just specific for like our needs. And if anybody else can't control their garbage, they could have it for their own facility or find a solution elsewhere. Like we take our problems, we're trying to solve it within our community, but then we can't have like everybody else's problems to bring to our community. So it's either, uh, like instead of like increasing capacity here, you guys should look for like another place like in, in the rural area and then try to process more or maybe like shut down this whole planet like here, which is right in the middle of like residential area, higher rate residential area. I mean, foot traffic here is like unbearable nowadays, like three years ago versus now.
If you can start closing out the comments, want to make sure everybody can get on.
How many minutes do I have left?
That's enough. Start. Can I take the clock?
He has his time to me. And he's a business owner across the street. How many people do we have up there?
There's three more after him.
Okay. We have anyone online holding?
All right. So like as far as like the questions, can we have like a form or representative that we can submit all, um, questions and concerns and writing and make sure that we get answers to those? And if that's the case, can we get that email or link?
Yeah, we have, we have an email address which we posted up on the, uh, presentation tonight. It's just public hearing at.
I understand that I don't see any materials where anybody could go back and, um, find out where the emails are.
Yep.
It's just like, it's like this whole hearing wants to be diluted that yes, we did our part. We had a hearing that we just found out about last minute. The whole community, Arabic speaking community around here, nobody knows anything. It's like few people that lives around the block. And I'm sure if they had enough time to manage to let everybody know, you'll have a big protest right here every day and it's going to be bothering you till you shut it down.
The public, again, written comments can come in, public comments for the next 30 days. If there's additional time needed, then, um, the, I'm sure the department, Department of Protection is always open for, uh, trying to address things and/or assist in that matter.
Hi, my name is Samir Avila. I live on floor 77, Brooks. I know previously a couple of ladies came up and they basically described the situation in terms of the odor. Um, it's really hard, honestly, to even walk your dog. You know, I just walk around wearing a mask as if it's still during COVID. I mean, interestingly enough, I know you mentioned something about uh, twenty-one that there was uh, increased production in twenty-one. But let me remind you when twenty-one was during COVID and lockdown. So people probably didn't even realize what was going on because they're not going to leave outside their houses. Or violations, exactly. Another thing I wanted to, to address is um, with the increase in production. I know there's going to be increased vehicles, which obviously are going to cause a lot of road damage. Who's, who's paying taxi drivers to get fixed? I mean, we're, we're really feeling the burden as is. Um, and then with your increased production, you know, obviously that's going to increase a lot of bottles. Um, and then, well, the smell, obviously, there's no question about that. And I wanted to also know like who conducted the report that we were just watching? And is that public? Is that made available for the public?
Yes, so environmental services prepared the environmental justice impact statement. We did the presentation here tonight. All these materials, the environmental justice impact statement, as well as materials that we had presented tonight will be available online.
So, so just to confirm, it's a consulting group that you hired to create this, this report, correct?
Uh, well, I am part of the consulting group. I was hired to create the report there.
Right, okay. And all the information I was giving to you was obviously to get it. So it's, it's basically, it's a, right?
Okay, we have to get, we use the information that's available through multiple sources to get uh, information on what's going on there.
Now, how often would the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection be conducting tests for like emissions and other harmful gases?
You'd have to go to that question after the Department of Environmental Protection.
You lose, okay. Is there anyone here that represents the environment? I have a side conversation in front of the whole problem.
Yeah, the environmental department, try to, try to make sure everybody can be heard.
Uh, how many additional employees will you be anticipating hiring?
Mike? Uh, to be honest, it would be possibly five. But one of the things that you should know is eighty percent of our employees come from Patterson. We hire, we didn't count ourselves. Uh, it hasn't been brought up in this slide. I can speak when we have some employees here. One of the things, and real quick, Mike, take away from you, we haven't been investing back in twenty twenty-one with a specific piece of equipment that we're going to have to trash in detail and dispose of them over there. That would allow us and it got us access to the evil items around us across the street. Like Mike said, that relative come past us, as you guys know, the food area, six days will be twice a day if they go to Big Sleep Milling. No privately owned garlic company in St. Louis Jersey shipped their outbound leaves to the underground with supplements of a four year. The gentleman that's sitting right here runs for a tractor trailer department. We should run fifty to fifty tractor trailers like dead. When we ran less than twenty today out of this facility, now we don't run any.
So.
And back to your question real quick, sorry before, but you said back to where you come from and your ancestry, our landfills are away from people.
I don't see it.
To answer that question, we're not a landfill or a transportation like the woman Sandra called earlier, like your store produces trash. When there's trash that produced, doesn't it go directly to a landfill? It has to go to a facility that processes it, pulls out the recyclables, pulls out any ads and things like that, and then capital is sent to a landfill. So that's why we are here.
I will just add on to Mike's thing that uh, one of the issues that you have in the state of New Jersey right now is that uh, there aren't no real disposal capacities. You know, we have our main office and I live in Pennsylvania, so we get much of the trash that's coming over from New Jersey into Pennsylvania. Um, so that those kind of things are always going to be an issue. Um, having disposed capacity is something that some of the municipalities have been able to do. Uh, counties have been able to do, some have not. So that's why you have flow control counties and you have not flow control counties. So that's based on just the um, kind of the dynamics of what happens and, and what you have to deal with. We're trying to deal with solid waste issues today.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Sasha Lowry. Um, I just have two questions. The first question.
Get a little closer to the mic, sorry.
This is close enough. I'll try to. Um, two questions. So the first question is regarding the information I was presented today on the screen um, in this public hearing, was there any other uh, community engagement measures taken to actually hear from the community and what they want or need or think?
We've uh, reached out to the community in the past when we did the plan amendment application for the state county process, uh, which had started back in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two. And uh, we, you know, sent out mailers, we've sent out, uh, we posted things at the local uh, businesses and shops and just indicate when the meetings were being held to try, to try to get information out and to reach out to the public. Um, that, you know, the, the information has always been uh, published, uh, both online and in the newspapers. And um, you know, we went to this particular hearing, he's had a sign, you know, posted outside for more than sixty days. So um, you know, it's, it's been a lot of outreach in those kind of fashion.
Okay, and just to be backing up what the young lady said earlier, probably um, more, a more diverse language of like make it accessible to everyone so they can understand. Wait, 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 because I'm losing my train of thought, I'm so sorry. Um, so um, before I lose my train of thought, if that wasn't really a question. Um, I wanted to know with like the increase or the expansion, I know you mentioned that there are two hundred, no, one hundred and ten trucks that are currently running. So would the expansion, it'll probably be more?
No, so actually, to answer your question, our expansion has nothing to do with our. Our road is not going to be, our, we're going to overlook. Be able to bring in that amount of trash when the issue is right now, we get to our limit very quickly. We have to turn our customers with what Sandra stated before, ends up a lot of people developing. So if you guys know the area, they're looking to build a community center for home, cycle care, park, cycle building. Vesper Street where there's cameras, that's been there for the last six months. Believe we've dumped in every weekend. We own a building all the way down to West Rowway by the hell that's under down there. Every weekend we pump in some legal dumping. So what happens is you don't have enough facility for you to see the lives that actually dump, as well as the education to wear the athletic material. They dump illegally. So we're just looking for an expansion in our overall condition. Again, Mike did not take away from you, we're not expanding our program. We're not building more buildings, we're not doing anything like that because of the fact that we don't have. Now that we have the addition of the rail, it's not going to extend our operating hours. And again, for some of the residents, you might have a fall, we understand it's a small career, we used to operate until eleven o'clock at night. I don't know if you're falling, you might have heard the back alarms on some of our trucks with the noise throughout the night. I know Hayden, you can tell ladies is here, he's going to speak on behalf of it. Ever since we invented the certain equipment that we have involved the rail. Our limit to shut my safety air.
The smell.
Which I'll get to that. The problem with the smell is this, we're needing the D P to get us something that we're allowed to spray that's a deodorizer that has an M S P X heat that is legal for us to use. Currently right now, we're only allowed.
I just want to make sure that this, this doesn't include my five minutes break.
No, 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 I'm sorry, I answered multiple questions. So currently we're allowed to spray this wall of fragrance inside the building. But that doesn't help when there's wings and gusts and vehicles passing and things like that, which then gets out to the community. So we are working with the D P to see if there's something that we can utilize that will limit the smell that access to buildings. Like you said, we have four air filters on the roof, carbon filters, anything that gets sucked through there does get filtered. If you go on the roof, you won't smell anything. You're smelling it at high level because there's stuff that escapes out of the load. We're, we are working with the D P for some forms of deodorizer that can get sprayed, it's not harmful.
Okay, so thank you for answering everyone's questions. Um, since my last question is, even though you said there won't be like any additions to the fleet with the one hundred and ten vehicles that are currently running, is there any way to monitor and possibly filter those emissions that are incidented to the air? Because like there are quite a few tools in the area. I know St. Louis has hospitals in the area. I'm not sure about any other medical facilities. But is there any way to filter or monitor the emissions that are coming from the, the current?
Yeah, so one of the things that was passed out in two thousand eight, someone walked out the wrong time. In two thousand eight, the U S actually made it so that you run a diesel truck, that a diesel particulate filter, it calls D P F filter. We actually have to remove that bag and take the soot out of the actual vehicle. So it's burning, it's actually capturing any of the bad emissions. Thankfully for us, majority of our fleet, eighty-five percent or more is newer than two thousand eight, it's more than two thousand fifteen newer. So they all follow within what you're looking for, something that would capture them. So those ones, we have to escape off, have them baked, cleaned and put back in each and every one of our trucks. Your nose are allowed to let your easily foul happen. So they are that much.
Also, if that filter is not baked, the truck won't run.
Right.
So it has to continuously be seen that filter on that particular trucks has to be gone. So there are, there is a lot of stuff, there needs to be a lot of communications. I guess we know the business, you people are just aggravated what, what's going on in the neighborhood, worried about their health. I, I've been working here twenty years. I worked at the markets for another twenty years. A quarter mile away, so I've been in this neighborhood for forty years from when I was a kid. And like I said, there's, there's a lot of stuff that needs to be communicated back and forth.
So I appreciate your answer. You people are residents, we're residents. And as this process comes forward, I just hope that whatever decision is made, however that expansion happened, you really take into consideration what this community needs, what they're asking for and truly hear them. We don't need anybody else just coming and partnering these things, what they're going to do. Listen to us.
Thank you. One thing, one thing that I can say is, I'm in this office every day.
The smell, the smell.
Well, these are, we'll, we'll take this and keep the public comment going. Does, you know, there are, there are ways to, you know, voice or express concerns that Mike has an open door policy, which I will tell you, I work with a lot of different facilities, it's not usual. Um, and uh, but you know, there's, there are, you know, calls that's made into the county or to the New Jersey D P that get transmitted back to the facilities um, through that process of reporting. So you know, that's an opportunity for things to, to get communicated back to the facilities. Sometimes, you know, it's, it's good to hear what's going on. Go ahead.
Yeah, good afternoon. My name is Robert Vera. Um, I'm a, I'm an employee here at Gator, but I'm a long time resident of Patterson. Uh, I've been here over fifty seven years. Uh, I live on North Second Street and there's also a transfer station over there. No difference. Um, I, yeah, is there a smell when it gets hot? Yeah, you know, look at the weather. It's, it's hot. So it's going to get a little worse. And I understand that because I go through it over there, my, where I live at. But, I mean, we, you know, we, we could work this out, we could work together and get it to a better place, into a better environment for everybody. I think we, you know, the city needs this transfer station, it would accept more garbage because I live in Patterson, I drive to Patterson. And a lot, and I also clean up here. Every daily morning, I, I do from here all, all the way down to uh, Timmy's street. And there'd be a lot of illegal dumping. And I'm not trying to say at pinpoint, but we do open these bags. And sorry to say, a lot of it comes from Gold Avenue, a lot of it comes from around here because you know what? Patterson, um, only doing four days pickup now because with my house, they used to pick it up on Mondays. Now they skip Monday, so now we're picking up on Tuesday. Meanwhile, here, it wasn't violent. They get picked up Wednesday and Saturday, the regular. But they bulk, ask them what they do with their bulk. Because Patterson, you got to pay for them. So the company that comes from New York, pick up their garbage, doesn't take their bulk. They so backed up with garbage from, from the other, um, from the other wards that they get here late. So yeah, a, a, a lot of it comes from, you know, the city itself not managing it the proper way. So all we asking is to open up the door a little bit more. Let's talk about this, let's work together. Because listen, we got, we got food market over here. So we can't talk about flies because there's flies all over the place. There's rats. Not only because of us, but let's, you know, let's look around. You got these illegal buildings uh, with no backyards, no parking lots. We know about this, guys, come on. So where do all these garbage is going to? Let's, let's be honest. So we need to open it up more. And you know, maybe we'll get together with the city and see we're going to set more garbage and we Mike, got the train running and there's no faster way to get rid of this garbage. And I'm not talking because I work here, it's because I know how it going on around my city. And I'm talking for my city, I'm not talking for Gator. I'm just talking about my city and how better can it be if we work together? Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Cassie Tava. I'm an organizer with Clean Water Action in Elizabeth, New Jersey. And first of all, I just want to read you something back from your PowerPoint. Um, you said on the adverse stressor cancer risk from illegal particulate matter. As noted for particulate matter, the proposed increase in daily throughput capacity is projected to increase the number of trucks that will deliver solid waste and chip pollen based from data. So do you have a rebuttal to that or? That's not what the gentleman right there just said. He said you guys would keep it at one hundred and.
No, I think what he said was he was talking about its own fleet of the vehicles. The, the proposed increase is going to result in, you know, additional trucks accessing the facility to both deliver the, deliver waste to the facility and take waste away. I think we were pretty explicit in the presentation that, that you know, there's going to be an increase in the number of our trucks.
Why you word it that way? Because I'm pretty sure I saw it here, one hundred and ten, and that was it.
That's our current lead, we're not looking for a larger part of the lead whatsoever. Of that one hundred and ten, we don't probably cover any of the trucks per day that do some spares or things like that. The expansion is to allow other customers, as well as towns, to utilize our service. So there's clearly an increase in trucks, correct?
It is a, it is in addition to having a transfer station supplies, uh, you know, transport services, solid waste transfer services to communities uh, around in Passaic County. So uh, they have a number of trucks in their own fleet that are picking up cans servicing, you know, residential communities and the like. So our look at the traffic was solely looking at trucks regardless of whether it was owned by Gator or owned by someone else. We just looked at what's the number of trucks that is going to take delivery twelve hundred tons a day based on what they normally do.
Well, does it matter if they're your trucks or someone else's trucks? They're still producing the pollution.
That, it doesn't matter. It would be increase in pollution in our analysis that we provided both in the, in our environmental justice impact statement, which access is more very, very uh, extensively done. Um, you know, includes that and it doesn't look at the trucks um, that are just from Gator. Again, it looks at all trucks. You actually take in assumptions in there that doesn't, you know, if it's made although Mike has most of his vehicles, he likes to get facilities, obviously. Uh, where he's, that they can, and his fleet as he just explained is updated, is, you know, is using a lot of newer equipment. And, you know, has new and updated things. We didn't take that into consideration. We kind of made it, um, you know, worst case assumption to come up with the scenarios and information that we provided tonight. So we're looking at that, the amount of emissions and, and the amount of trucks that we looked at were all based on what's done in the overburdened community and what was the associated with this particular uh, proposed expansion project.
And then you also had on your PowerPoint that um, you had two additional public meetings that were held as part of the county review process and you had a sixty day comment period. Um, where the community had an opportunity to comment, um, but no comments were received. Um, so where did you advertise that there was a comment period? I know you mentioned up in stores and it was on the outside of this building, I believe you said.
Yeah, we advertised um, in the uh, the specialito uh, paper as well as the uh,
I'm sorry, what is that?
It's a Spanish newspaper.
Okay.
As well as, as well as the.
Spanish, they speak Arabic and other languages.
They probably didn't speak, and then it was done in English. It was done in both English and Spanish. We took the overburdened communities, second most spoken language is actually Spanish. Okay, so that's why we did it that way. Okay, so that's why we did it that way.
Where was that information from?
Where did the New Jersey Department of Environmental Effects, which is based on their, um, you know, statistics that are collected from sets of information. So we would buy the information that we had to go and, and select the, uh, the language to be able to have the information gotten out. Again, it was in an English newspaper, it was published in a Spanish newspaper. It was also published on the New Jersey's Environmental Justice website, um, that was there. And, you know, for, you know, if you know that, you know, for what you're doing and what you're involved with, that I would assume that that's a, a website that you frequently visit. It does have for each of the counties, what activities are going on. If you went in there and you looked at Gator's listing on that county, you'd see all of the information that we did for the county applications. It's also provided in our environmental justice impact statement. Again, I just put copy section there and then that would be in there. I will hold your time for that. I'm just answering your question.
So this is a question for you specifically. So if you didn't work for Gator, would you be checking that website every day? And knowing when a comment period would be and when to show up for one? Would you personally know when that would be?
You're asking a person who's, who's in, a consultant in the business. And I deal with a mo, a number of different companies. Yeah, I, I do this for a living. But, yeah, I take your point that it would be doing it. I'm just saying that that's the way that we have Gator information now.
And obviously it's not working because no, no one commented on it. You had no adverse comments. So what were the comments? Did you have any comments on it?
No.
Okay, so obviously your, your method is not working.
Hi, my name is Joseph. Uh, I own about eight properties in the area and have many tenants. The number one complaint I get all the time is the smell. Very bad smell. Majority of the complaints from tenants are, many times, especially during the summer, they can't open their windows and enjoy fresh air because of the smell. It is very bad. Um, I smell it all the time, especially in the summertime. And the only time I do smell it sometimes, but in the summer it's better. I know it's heat, but still, I mean, you can't tell the residents that live around here, hey, it's too bad, it's hot, what are you gonna do with the smell? I mean, people live here, you know what I mean? You gotta, you gotta work with the people, you gotta do something about the smell. That's the number one issue to everyone that I speak to is the smell. So please, do something about this smell. We have a mosque up the block. Every Friday from twelve to three, twelve to three P M, four P M, we have a prayer. Over four hundred people pray outside in the compound, okay? Those hours, everyone sitting outside have to deal with that smell every Friday. It's very, very bad. Everybody complains about it. Work with the community. You know what I mean? That's all I'm saying. Second of all, we do speak English. Yes, people do speak English. Answer your question. It's America. It's the melting pot. America's made up of people of all nationalities that speak a lot of languages. And around your facility, the second language is Arabic. This facility around it, majority of it, do speak Arabic. That's their second language. I think you should have done a better job by advertising this to residents around here. Residents around here don't know nothing about environmental, environmental protection, um, environment, whatever, it's the website. They don't know how to go around, they have no idea. I think you should have given out flyers. Flyers should be given out to, to the home. So people know. Guaranteed, if people knew about this, you would have had probably over two thousand people here today. We found out about this about two hours ago from someone, and.
We did send out, we did send out letters, just so you know.
No one I know got a letter. No one I know, I, I have, I have many residents, none of them got a letter. I didn't see a letter. Okay? So I think next time you should do where, let the people know about it, not on the website, give out flyers. Okay? You could give it out to the mosque, over a thousand people go there. Um, do it better next time, please. But the main issue is the smell. I know you were saying something about you working with the, uh, the state about some kind of, uh, air freshener, what is it? E, e- exactly, you're breathing it. Believe it or not, and I'm not making this up, I swear. There are days when the smell is bad. Late on in evening when I leave, I get, I get an ache in my throat. And it's always, it's the same day that the smell is bad. I swear to God. The days that the smell is not bad, I don't get it, but it only happens on the days where the smell is bad, so she's right. Whatever it is, we're also breathing. I, I'm myself, I'm one of, you know, I'm like the lab mouse. I, I, you know, I, I, it happens to me. So please do something about it. Maybe increase your, uh, your, uh, filter you're talking about. You, you were saying that we're smelling when the gates are open, it's whatever that, close the gates maybe. Keep the gates closed. Let, let the systems do their, do their job. But you, I know you don't live around here. You probably live in a mansion. You're probably one of the owners. You look like one of the owners. You probably live in a mansion somewhere, somewhere far away where you don't smell this at all. But the people here, long-term people, many of these people here don't have it like that. They live here and they gotta deal with this smell. You know, I swear to God, if you lived here, you would complain too. If you got it every day, you wake up to it, you go to sleep to it. You almost get immune to it, but it's still, it bothers you. I have a tenant that says, I like to go outside and play with my kids. I can't because of the smell. I gotta take my kids to another neighborhood, to another park to play with my kids because I can't deal with the smells. So I said, what am I gonna do? You know what I mean? Go complain to Gator. This is, I called a few times and they told me, okay, we'll let the people, we'll let someone know about it. And it's, we never get it, nobody ever helps out. So it's the smell. Please, do something about the smell. And next time you do this, send out some, some, some flyers to the homes, maybe to the mosque.
Yeah, like I said, we, we did send out specific letters to all the property owners within, you know, the.
No one that I know received it. No one I know received it.
Um, I have.
Maybe you did, something happened, some down the line, it didn't work out. But if you get someone, give it out to the mosque, because there's a lot, there's a lot of tenants there. Give it out to sort of homes in the area around your facility. Even if you put in Arabic and English, just because this area right here, around your facility, majority of people speak Arabic.
Yeah.
You're right. By giving it to the mosque, you have a better way of, 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 of giving it out to everyone.
You did post a flyer at the mosque.
I don't know why you're repulsed about why people getting information. It's a reality. All people get information, that's all there is.
Guys, gentlemen, sorry.
The smell, please.
Yeah.
All right.
Yep, yep.
Thank you very much.
Yep, understood. Miss, you already did that, right?
Yeah, I think I took about two and a half minutes. I'd like to pick up a two and a half.
Can I, let's get, let's get through the, anybody else that has something going on first? You already, yes. I just wanna make sure everybody gets a chance.
Good afternoon, my name is, good evening. Uh, my name is Hani Hamam. I am the owner and operator of Excel Blades up the street. Um, my building encompasses the front end. My building encompasses the front end of the block, uh, next, or across the street, which is surrounded by Genesee Avenue, Brooks Avenue, Investor Street, which are specifically his routes in and out of the transfer stations. Um, I don't have any questions at all, but I do wanna publicly voice my comments and my observations throughout the year. So we've been there since nineteen ninety-three, in the same building. My father bought, uh, started Excel, bought the building and moved here in ninety, nineteen ninety-three. And since that time, we've seen a steady increase in traffic, okay? And, and up until the passing of Anthony Gator, God rest his soul, um, that was increasing ever so steadily as the trucks decreased, all right? Since Mike took over and opened up the transfer ta, station, there has been a significant reduction in traffic. Like significant. There are no pumping of horn, truck horns at all, or anything like that, which we used to have all the time. And you guys remember, we used to, my dad used to come and talk to you guys and tell you guys to have your truck, to have us calm down or just give us a minute. We're loading, we're unloading. People are coming in and out. That doesn't happen anymore. Because there is actually a reduced amount of trucks transiting those streets. And in terms of smell, yeah, it happens. It happens at least once a week, and usually when they're processing food. Compo, uh, compostables, right? When you pick up garbage from supermarkets, when you pick up garbage from hospitals, this is gonna happen. And when you have open trucks that are coming from all over the place, those smells are gonna leak out. There's nothing you can do about it. What, while I understand you all feel and you all smell this sort of way. I've been coming here since I was a child. Does it bother me sometimes? Yes, it does. But he has been here since nineteen ninety-one. He has state and federal regulation, no, but this is still. He has state and federal regulations that only allow him to work here. You can't move anywhere else, right? And then when those trucks come over here and they find out that he's full, those trucks are idling. And then they're gonna leave here with more garbage still leaking, you know? So it's better to process and get it out than to have them wait only to find out, no, you gotta move on and go somewhere else, you know? With regards to smells, aerosols are the key, but like you said, until you can get an approval from the EPA, both state and federal, there's nothing you can spray that isn't considered toxic. Plants, like even the aerosol you use in your bathroom, those are toxins. Those are petrochemicals that will actually kill you in higher concentrations. But they don't tell us that because it's low concentrations. They can't use those. The volumes are too high. So when those come through, they'll use them, you know? Better ventilation or, or extraction system? Yeah, maybe increase those, Mike, but that's really about it. I would tell you from my perspective, uh, from my family's perspective, and Excel and Dileon Plastics, who are regularly affected by the trucks, we have no problem with it, and we are fully in support of it.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nancy Romano. I did have a couple of questions, but they're all answered. I have one problem. The school on Michigan Ave, I think I spoke with Mike before, they come in at three o'clock in the morning. I know that's really early, but the school does start at eight. They can come at six, you know, at least. And they still throw their trucks down, it's been dawn. It just makes us so scared, you know? I don't know if there's something that could be done about it. I spoke with you a couple days, like two, three days, they stop. They came a little bit later, but then after that, it's at two, three o'clock in the morning. You know, that's, it's scary because we're all sleeping and then all you're home and it's really loud, you know? You don't know what goes on or what happens, you know? So I don't know if we can see, if we can talk to them again. I spoke to the principal, they did nothing about it.
It's something we can definitely look into. I think the issue is because of the contract, it's set up for a certain type of equipment. But we might be able to ask them if we can change the equipment where it doesn't make that noise. The issue with the three in the morning is every school is prior to a certain timeframe. It just so happens that you are the closest school to us right now, so as they're beginning that route, they're hitting that facility. Every school has.
And they do it last because it's the closest?
The issue is with last, you know what the traffic's like, and the issue is with kids running around. So there's a safety factor that comes into play, and we try to fit it in for every school, which we have a decent amount of. But we'll look into the fact that it's front load and not rear load. Rear load would make it that much quieter of an operation.
Okay, I think it was a front load.
Yeah, it definitely is with the force. Yeah. Thank you.
Um, I just wanted to stress the point here. We can talk about, you know, individual testimonies all day, about Gator workers, environmental scientists. The point is, Gator is not existing ethically in this community. Right? We can talk about the odors, the experiential knowledge we gain, but at the end of the day, those odors are made up of chemicals. They are made up of PM two point five. They are made up of diesel particulate matter, which leads to heart attacks, strokes, different types of cancers, et cetera. And aerosols don't solve this problem. And that's why the EPA and the D E P haven't approved them. I don't know why we said that spraying aerosol will help. When last year, actually, Gator had a fire in their facility caused by an aerosol cannon and didn't contact the D U P at all. So the point is, they are not ethically existing in this community. And what I'm saying is that the amount of waste that they take in should not be increased until they can prove that they can be responsible to the community with the flies, with the smell, et cetera. The, the experience that, um, the gentleman over here had with breathing troubles, that is directly correlated to air toxins. I'm from North, right? I don't know a lot of the Patterson statistics, but one in four North children have asthma, specifically because of the pollution in our communities. And let me guys, let me remind you guys, the reason why this meeting is adjourned is because this is an overburdened community, which means that they already face adverse public health stresses from facilities like yours, or specifically from your facility. You guys have already had non-compliance violations. I'm not sure who said that they've been in compliance this whole time. They haven't. They haven't. You guys have received multiple non-compliance violations for not, not keeping up the, the maintenance of your vehicles. How are you going to do that? And at the same time, increase the waste by sixty-six percent. You would be processing nine hundred and sixty thousand more ton, pounds, sorry, pounds of solid waste a day. Nine hundred and sixty thousand, that's almost a million pounds of more solid waste. The point is, you guys already are irresponsible with your facility. And there's no reason why you guys should be responsible for even more waste. And I will say something about the dumping. That is an issue of people themselves, right? It's not a facility issue. If we bring in twelve hundred tons of trash, that doesn't necessarily mean that they'll all get handled properly. Uh, like I said, Gator has violations for mishandling, uh, waste as well as, um, mixing with. So the type of goals you guys think are actually going into the facility are getting, uh, thrown away with the rest. So.
We're at it. But we'll, as I said, we'll get to all the comments, so we'll just indicate that PM two point five does not mean it's, you know, something that, it does, that creates odors, but, um, no. But we'll, we'll, we'll respond to that. Sorry, I'm sorry. Thanks. Go ahead.
I have comments.
Can you comment online?
Hey, Chris, you're unmuted.
Hi, good afternoon, evening. Um, Chris Tendaso, they them pronounced, with the New Jersey Environmental Justice Alliance. I would like to echo some of the sentiments that have been brought up here in regards to the odors and to the, uh, presence of more trucks and garbage in the area. I think like it has been pretty clear, um, that we've heard from some folks tonight on how the odors are really impacting people here. And it's just, it's just this ingenious because it feels like they're not being hurt at all. Like there's people here that are explaining, they're giving you their life experiences. They're telling you that they're getting sick from this odors. And they're telling you that all of this is impacting them. And they're just being dismissed at this point. So I think it's really, if you're gonna hold these meetings, and it's also inaccessible, like the other folk, uh, other folks have brought up, that this is a mainly Arabic-speaking neighborhood, and the, if the filing wasn't done in that language, of course, then there's not gonna be a lot of comments on this, because people don't know that it's happening. Um, so that's not really honest and transparent from the way that folks are operating at this facility. And, um, I think it's really important to, into consideration what the people are saying. And really, if you're here to actually be a good neighborhood to these folks, be one. Like, don't ignore the things that are being said to you right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Man, you're up before it is.
Um, I just, as a community member, I do wanna work with Gator. I understand that there's a lot of garbage. We have to find a way to solve it. Uh, number one, even if you're not required to mail every single resident that can smell Gator, I think you should, and you should do it in, in the free label, just like they do for voting or for any other community meeting. Okay? I don't know what the actual regulations are and who you have to notify, but if you are a good neighbor, send it out to everybody in the mail. I did not receive any notice of this, and I've been living over there. I have absolutely no idea if somebody catches me like flowers. Okay, so that's number one. You have to maybe have smaller meetings with people who are very concerned. I like what you're doing about the truck, and we can go electric. Maybe you can wrap up the stuff quicker or write on the truck. Design something so we don't smell it at all. But the odor issue is the absolute number one. And, you know, I don't know when you started working with the EPA to solve the problem, but it's been twenty years, and I don't think we're gonna wait another twenty years. You know, we, you guys, the ones that don't have a problem with it are the ones that just come during the day and then go back to their nice fancy house where it's nice and beautiful and they don't want to smell it. I don't think I have a problem with that if I have to smell for two hours. But if I have to smell it every single day, I wake up in the morning and right away, even though my all weatherings are full, I can smell the garbage. Or if we wanna have a barbecue and we can't even smell the barbecue, it smells like garbage.
Or if we wanna have a barbecue and we can't even smell the barbecue, it smells like garbage, I don't think you take that. Okay, and I don't think anybody could take that. So we are willing to work with you, but we have to do something. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Well, I run the facility here and I'm here ten to twelve hours a day, five days a week. And I've seen a lot happen over the years. I've seen this place progress in a way that it definitely helps the community. Yeah, we're doing a lot more garbage, but I think people don't understand that we wanna do more garbage, but we can process it now with the rail and the bag system probably thirty percent quicker than we used to. So we used to get out of here ten, eleven o'clock at night. Backup alarms used to go, trucks would be coming in dumping. And because we loaded over the top and we sat the trailers up the road and the, and the trucks sat there for the next day smelling, so the whole community smelled. And now they go in a bag and they are literally gone in a matter of a half hour on the rail and the next day they are taken away. And with the bag system, the smell is completely decreased. Yes, there is an issue in the neighborhood and I understand it's the odor. Obviously, that's the biggest problem. We're gonna, we actually been working on it in the last couple of weeks to intensify deodorizers and systems put in. As far as traffic and particulates, the mosque has probably a thousand people. When five years ago, they probably had two hundred particulates. So you come here on a Friday, you can't get from there to Brooks Ave probably in about forty-five minutes. So is that a problem or if that's not a problem? But do you understand that the trucks we have now have systems to bait, to clean out the system? Yeah, you see smoke, but the particulates are taking away from that truck, people. We know, we know the business, we can't say there's a truck out there. We have probably eighty-five percent new trucks in our fleet now. And also you gotta remember, we are extending stuff out on a train where we used to have literally thirty trailers going from here to Pennsylvania. So not only are you being hurt, but across from here to Pennsylvania are being hurt by the traffic trailers going across the road. I'm not saying we're perfect, but we are running a good operation. I look around, I, I, like I said, I worked in the markets for twenty years. I've worked here for twenty years and I'm, I'm breathing pretty good. Yeah, I'm, I'm not saying it's perfect. I'm not saying the smell gets to me some days and it does. Yeah, we gotta work with the community. I understand that. And like I said, I'm here every day. I work fifty, fifty-one weeks out of the year. I'm here fifty-one weeks. And if anybody knows, I'm here nonstop. Mike's in the office and he's the new generation and yes, he's trying to make things better. I think you're attacking us because, no, I, and I understand, I understand, especially the people that live here, the people on the outside. You're from Newark. You have no idea what's going on in Patterson. I do. And the people that live here, like this young lady, I understand that. And then now you've got St. Joe's, business ever, traffic, why is there traffic? Because St. Joe's blew up in the last five years. Hundred eighty-one units, going up probably in about six months. You're gonna have hundred eighty-one units, two cars per family, that's four hundred cars in the neighborhood. I'm just, things, things are congested here and it's not, we've been here. We just wanna make a living and make new things right. I'm not saying.
We're not attacking you, just make sure the community knows their rights.
Oh, yeah, like I said, with the doors open, like I said, the thing that's complaining on here is odor. And you deserve to, to hear that. But we also are getting rid of the garbage in the area, which is a big help to the. We can't just take our stuff and go to Pennsylvania and start work. We're here, we're here to stay. You people are here to stay. People left up here and we gotta work with this. Yes, we do. But like I said, we're trying and like I said, it's an open door. And if you make suggestions as far as trucking, uh, uh, trucking is, even though we're bringing in more, out trucking is less. So it's gonna be about the same. What's, what's going out is quicker and less, less, but more is coming in and we can process. Like I said, we used to get out of here ten o'clock at night. I know for a fact, ten, eleven at night, we're pretty much buttoned up at six. Saturday, we're buttoned up at twelve. We used to be in the morning after, not Saturday. That's gotta help the community because Sunday and half the Saturday, we're in and out Saturday. That's how fast we are. You know, like I said, if you have questions, if somebody wants to come talk to Mike or myself, feel free. And I'm, I'm willing to walk me around the place and show you everything. There's, there's no issue with that. It's an open book. I mean, we're here and you guys are here to react to work together. There has to be some communication. I understand your frustration with the odor and we have to work on it. I know in the summer it's tough. You get grass and you let it sit for two days and you breathe it and it smells bad. Anything that kills you, it's, it's grass. I'm talking, we're talking about, and we're, and grass, we take in grass here and that, that's an odor. That's a major odor. Decrease it sub- substantially.
I saw the public comments.
For new and a returning one.
Two hours, that's a week, once a week, four, one, two, three, four hours, one day a week.
Folks, we just have, we have a couple of left people online. This is to like close up. I don't wanna get, I understand these issues. We just wanna hear from the people that haven't gotten an opportunity to speak. Okay, so we have two people, two people on the line.
All right, Colin, I've asked you to unmute.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, fabulous. Uh, thanks for your time. I just wanted to start with a suggestion, which is, um, you know, the folks from Gator are talking about being good neighbors. And I think one way to show that you're good neighbors would be to maybe have another session and do some outreach in Arabic, right? For that next, uh, public comment session. I think that'd be a great way to start trying to engage further with public comments. Um, I do have a couple of questions or concerns as well. One of the questions was that I wanted to know how we can be sure that you won't exceed the tonnage limits if we were to increase, if they were to be increased to twelve hundred, given the fact that you have been cited multiple times for exceeding your tonnage limits when they were lower. Uh, the concern is just that we'll increase the tonnage limits and then you'll still go over those limits. Um, the, the next issue that I wanted to raise was regarding the odor. Uh, the odor should be managed, obviously, right? That's been a very consistent theme. But I just wanna be clear that like non-toxic odor management is the best way to do that. And in order to achieve a non-toxic odor management, that the responsibility, right, isn't on the community. It's, it's if you operate within this community, it's a cost of doing business for you to figure out the best way to be a responsible neighbor. And I recognize that it can be difficult, right, to achieve a non-toxic way to manage that odor. But like, I'm sorry, that's the cost of doing business in this particular area. That's, that's just what comes with doing a business in the area. And the final, uh, point that I wanted to raise was regarding this, this diesel, uh, PM two point five that we're talking about, right? These air emissions that we're talking about. A- as far as I can tell, there are no electric vehicles in your fleet and, and the rail operations are not electric. If you were, if you were concerned about trying to be good neighbors and trying to reduce air pollution, one way to do that would be to engage or rather to invest in electric vehicles, to invest in electrical rail operations in order to try and reduce that PM two point five, which comes with diesel-operated vehicles. So, uh, those are my comments. Thanks very much for your time.
Thank you.
Rachel, Rachel, I've asked you to unmute.
Yes, can you hear me? Okay, great. Uh, my name is Rachel Dawn Davis. I'm the Public Policy and Justice Organizer for Water Spirit, which is a spiritual ecology nonprofit, sponsored by the Sisters of St. Joseph of Peace. Um, we've been organizing throughout the state, including in Patterson, especially, especially with respect to, uh, flooding and really having sewage-free streets and rivers, so, um. But across the board, really inclusive communications are imperative and we have witnessed across the state that trust is increased when engagement is supported across the most widely spoken languages other than English. This is really easy to do with the tools we have in twenty twenty-four, so I would recommend phrases like good neighbors of, and echoing that that can be quite off-putting unless it's really paired with expanded outreach and education. Um, and so it's obviously crucial to recognize the implications of the applicant's proposed expansion through the lens of environmental justice and the sanctity of water, increasing the daily intake of solid waste from seven hundred twenty to twelve hundred tons, tons again, without really any guarantee that that wouldn't go over that threshold. Not only raises concerns about air and water pollution, but it also has profound implications for all of the surrounding community's health and well-being, um, especially where we're considering cumulative impacts, where New Jersey is supposed to be a leader in preventing those from being exacerbated. So the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection obviously holds the responsibility to carefully consider the expressed concerns of the community in this matter, which have been really widely stated throughout this, uh, session. By rejecting or approving this expansion, N J D A P obviously has the power to uphold principles of environmental justice, ensuring that the burden of waste management does not disproportionately fall upon marginalized communities. Uh, we must acknowledge the sacredness of water, as any expansion in waste processing inevitably poses risks to local water sources. Water, essential for all life, as we know, deserves our utmost reverence and protection. And really, any decision regarding the applicant's operations must prioritize the preservation of water quality and the integrity of aquatic ecosystems. Thank you, and we'll share our comments in writing.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wanna speak before we close? In our two-hour window. We, we appreciate everybody's comments. Appreciate that the, I think that the owners are getting to be here, you know, it's important that everybody hears what's going on, so we're, as I said, we're gonna take all the comments that are received, um, prepare responses and, and determine which one to go on. And we'll provide that into a report into the department as part of this, uh, final process. Again, the comment period is open, over thirty days after this, to send comments in via, um, electronic mail and or by, uh, regular mail. So we encourage that if you still wanna make more comments. Thank you. Uh, with that, I'm going to adjourn the public, this public period.